Good afternoon. This is the 30th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. It's now called order to actually turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate. But before we have the invocation, I'd like to welcome the Georgia Civic Awareness Program for Students. Let's give them a hand who's here today.[22.02][22.02][applause] Tonight's invocation will be led by Iman Akwil Ingram of Masjid. Did I say it right?
Yes.
Of Mas. We're going to ask that everyone would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Baltimore City. Charm City. This is a city where I read once engraved upon a bench that Baltimore is America's greatest city. City of great potential. And there's also great opportunity present in front of us. The times are right. The times are rich. The times are ripe. And also with this, there's also great need that exists in front of us as well. So in understanding this, it is important that you all understand that you are our leaders and that we see you and that we believe in you and that we look to you for guidance and that we are looking for connection between those on the ground and yourselves for with all of the opportunity that is present. We believe that you all can assist us in reaching our goal, in reaching our destination, in assisting yourselves and all that are present in this city in achieving a higher quality of life and having impact not only upon those that are present in this city but also beyond this city as well. So we leave you with a few words of God where he swears by his creation called time and he states that all of humanity is in an utter state of loss except for those who bear characteristics, except for those who have faith, except for those who perform righteous deeds, except for those that mutually advise one another with truth, and except for those that are patient with one another. So in understanding this, we simply ask our Lord that he grants all of us success, that he grants all of you success, and that we achieve the best of this life and the best to benefit all in our society. Thank you.
May. Iman.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Iman. Thank you so much. Thank you. Want to thank Iman for the prayer and those inspiring words. A clerk will call the role of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Okay. Before we do the evening showcase, I failed to mention that members of our own youth commission have joined with the Georgia Civic Group. So will they please stand everybody so we give you a hand?[264.64][264.64][applause] This evening, we welcome Ms. Courtney, is it Betel? Ms. Courtney Betel of the Cash Campaign of Maryland. You've got to ask people now because sometimes you'll say the name that you think and it's not that name, you know? So I wanted to make sure because people like for their name to be said correctly. So welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here. I'm Courtney Betel. I'm the Director of Financial Capability with the Cash Campaign of Maryland. You might be familiar with us as Baltimore Cash Campaign. We actually recently merged with our sister organization, Maryland Cash Campaign, but our mission and our objectives stay the same, which is bringing financial stability and security to households throughout Maryland through by offering a variety of direct service programs like free tax preparation, financial education, financial coaching, by providing financial education and assistance to other nonprofit organizations throughout the state and by advocating for policies and programs that can build bring financial prosperity to all Marylanders. So I wanted to talk to you tonight about two programs that we have that are coming up or that are currently being offered that can support the constituents that you serve. So the first is our Free Tax Preparation Program. You may have seen our bus ads or our PSAs. We provide free tax preparation services for households throughout the state that earn $54,000 or less. We IRs certify volunteers, over 200 every year, to prepare taxes across the state. We have about 15 tax sites across the city. We serve people six days a week with those services. They can call 410-234-8008 or visit us at be more free taxes.org to make an appointment with us. In your folders, you should have a folder with the Cash Campaign of Maryland logo on the cover of it. You'll see one of our Free Tax Preparation folders in there as well. So please make sure that people know about us. We are here to serve the community and making sure that people get their maximum refund, get all of the credits that they are deserving. Each year, we bring about $5 million back in earned income tax credits to Maryland households. So we are generating a lot of economic power for the city. The second item that I wanted to talk to you about is Money Power Day. And many of you, I recognize your faces because you've been to Money Power Day in the past. This might sound like an oxymoron, but Money Power Day is about making finances fun. So it is a full day of events, April 7th from 9:00 to 3:00 at Polywestern High School. This is a free event for the whole community, for the whole family. You also have this flyer in your folders as well. At this event, people can experience a host of workshops, everything from estate planning to starting and launching your small business. Are you prepared for the unexpected? How do you prepare for a major disaster that might happen to your household? And how do you recover afterwards? How do you how to pay down debt? Home ownership? We also have a Kid Zone. T. Rowe Price is actually sponsoring the Kid Zone this year and they're bringing their Money Confident Kids exhibit. So all of you high school students in the back, I hope to see you there. Maryland 529 is there helping to support our college and career access zone where we'll be able to help people identify pathways to building their economic success through higher education or training programs. Maryland 529 is actually raffling off in their raffle basket a $250 contribution to the Maryland 529 College Investment Program there. We've got Credit Cafe where people can pull their credit reports for free. Financial planners will be onsite all day providing one-on-one consultations. That's like a $1,500, $3,000 service that people can get for free at the event. All of the other activities and events, shredding of documents, legal assistance for those facing foreclosure due to unpaid property taxes or water bills, that is all going to be at Money Power Day. Again, this is a free event. It's for everybody. We want to see everybody there. We'll have prizes, games. Council President's been there in the past can attest to what a great event and it just really brings a lot of the financial services in one place. This is people's one-stop shop to get their financial house in order. So again, Money Power Day, April 7th, 9:00 to 3:00 at Polywestern High School. You can get more information at moneypowerday.org. And if you would like flyers for community events that are coming up, my card is in there. Please reach out to me. I'm happy to provide anything that you need. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for everything that the Cash Campaign of Maryland does to help our citizens navigate not only taxes but other services as well. So again, thank you.[562.45][562.45][applause] It is the council custom to generalize the invocation. Actual motion, generalize the prayer, voiced by Council Scott, seconded by Vice President Middleton. All in favor of generalizing the invocation, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have the motion adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the March 12 City Council Meeting is on council members' desks.
The motion to approve the journal, motion by Councilman Pinkett, seconded by Councilman Burnett. All in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to adjourn is adopted. Executive nomination withdrawn.
EA 18-0130, Ava's Ransom, Member Sustainability Commission, District 3.
Executive nominations.
EA 18-0141, L.G. Carter, Member Commission on Aging and Retirement Education, District 12.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0142, Lee Michaels, Member Commission on Aging and Retirement Education.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 18-0206, City Streets Opening Eastbourne Avenue in a 10-foot alley for the purpose of condemning and opening Eastbourne Avenue extending westerly 284 feet, more or less from a 10-foot alley to the westernmost extremity of it and a 10-foot alley extending westerly 56.4 feet, more or less from El Reno Street as shown on Plaid 336-A-34 in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0207, City Streets Closing Eastbourne Avenue in a 10-foot alley for the purpose of condemning and closing Eastbourne Avenue extending westerly 284 feet, more or less from a 10-foot alley to the westernmost extremity of it and a 10-foot alley extending westerly 56.4 feet, more or less from El Reno Street as shown on Plaid 336-A-34A in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0208, Sale of Property Former Bed of Eastbourne Avenue in a 10-foot alley for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interest in certain parcels of land known as the former bed of Eastbourne Avenue extending westerly 284 feet, more or less from a 10-foot alley to the westernmost extremity of it and a 10-foot alley extending westerly 56.4 feet, more or less from El Reno Street and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0209, Zoning Code Modifications for the purpose of making needed improvements to certain provisions that during the course of actively implementing the new zoning code were discovered to be functionally impractical or otherwise in need of modification to abate previously unanticipated consequences, correcting various errors, omissions, inconsistencies, correcting, clarifying, and conforming various references and terminology and generally relating to the zoning and development laws of the city of Baltimore. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0210, Zoning Conditional Use, Amending Ordinance 16-469 for the purpose of amending ordinance 16-469 to reauthorize and continue the permission for the establishment maintenance and operation of a parking lot for the parking of four or more automobiles on the property known as 4001 Roland Avenue, providing for the automatic termination of this ordinance and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored Clark.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0211, Bond Issue Affordable Housing Loan, $10 million for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore pursuant to General Assembly, House Resolution 4 and Senate Resolution 2 of 2018 approved by the members of the Maryland General Assembly representing Baltimore City to create a debt and to issue and sell its certificates of indebtedness as evidence thereof and proceeds not exceeding $10 million from the sale of such certificates of indebtedness to be used for the cost of issuance, including the expense of engraving, printing, advertising, attorney's fees, and all other incidental expenses connected therewith, and the remainder of such proceeds to be used for or in connection with the planning, developing, executing, and making operative the Affordable Housing Program of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore, including but not limited to the acquisition by purchase lease condemnation of any other legal means of land or property of any right, interest, franchise, easement, or privilege therein in the city of Baltimore. The payment of any and all costs and expenses incurred in connection with or incidental to the acquisition of management of land or property, including any and all rights of interest therein herein before mentioned, the payment of any and all costs and expenses incurred for or in connection with relocating and moving persons or other legal entities displaced by the acquisition of the land or property or any of the rights or interests therein herein before mentioned in the city of Baltimore, the development or redevelopment, including but not limited to the comprehensive renovation or rehabilitation of any land or property or any rights or interest therein herein before mentioned in the city of Baltimore, and the disposition of land and property for such purposes. Costs related to the rehabilitation and new construction of and operation of rental and home ownership developments, such costs to include but not limited to the relocation assistance, rental payment and home purchase assistance, housing counseling and buyer education assistance, and activities to support the orderly and sustainable planning, preservation, rehabilitation, and development of economically diverse housing in city neighborhoods, the elimination of unhealthful, unsanitary, and unsafe conditions, lessening density, eliminating obsolete or other uses detrimental to the public welfare or otherwise removing or preventing the spread of blight or deterioration in the city of Baltimore. The demolition, removal, relocation, renovation, or alteration of land, building, streets, highways, alleys, utilities or services, and other structures or improvements, and for the construction, reconstruction, installation, relocation, or repair of buildings, streets, highways, alleys, utilities or services, and other structures or improvements, the payment of any and all costs and expenses incurred for or in connection with doing any and all of the things herein mentioned, including but not limited to the costs and expenses of securing administrative appraisal, economic analysis, engineering, planning, designing, architectural surveying, and other professional services, and doing any and all things necessary proper to expedient in connection with or pertaining to any and all of the matters or things herein before mentioned. Authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds, conferring and imposing upon the Board of Finance of Baltimore City certain powers and duties, authorizing the submission of this ordinance to the legal voters of the city of Baltimore for their approval or disapproval at the general election to be held in Baltimore City on Tuesday, the 6th day of November 2018, and providing for the expenditure of the proceeds of sale of said certificates of indebtedness in accordance with the provisions of the Charter of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore and by the municipal agency designated in the annual ordinance of estimates of Mayor and City Council of Baltimore. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. We have three more of those guys.[1049.44][1049.44][laughing]
City Council Bill 18-0212, Bond Issue School Loan, $38 million for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore pursuant to General Assembly, House Resolution 2 and Senate Resolution 4 of 2018 approved by the members of the Maryland General Assembly representing Baltimore City to create a debt and to issue and sell at any time or from time to time or in one or more series its certificates of indebtedness as evidence thereof and proceeds not exceeding $38 million from the sale of such certificates of indebtedness to be used for the cost of issuance, including the expense of engraving, printing, advertising, attorney's fees, and all other incidental expenses connected therewith, which may include their proportion of the compensation of employees and general administrative expenses of the Department of Finance reasonably allocated to the issuance of the bonds, and the remainder of such proceeds shall be used for the acquisition by purchase lease condemnation or any other legal means of land or property or any rights therein in the city of Baltimore and demolition, demolishing, constructing, and erecting on said land or property or on any land or property now or hereafter owned by the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners and/or the mayor and city council of Baltimore. New school buildings, new school buildings, athletic and other auxiliary facilities, including community health and recreation facilities, and for additions and improvements to or the modernization or reconstruction of, including the inspection, removal, encapsulation, management, containment, and abatement of asbestos from existing facilities, and for equipment for any and all new or existing facilities authorized to be constructed, erected, added, improved, modernized, or reconstructed above the provisions thereof. The payment of any and all costs and expenses incurred for or in connection with doing any and all of the things herein mentioned, including but not limited to the costs and expenses of securing administrative appraisal, economic analysis, engineering, planning, design, architectural surveying, and other professional services, including without limitation services relating to planning for future projects of the same general character which may be constructed out of future loans, and for doing any and all things necessary proper or expedient in connection with or pertaining to any and all of the matters or things herein before mentioned. Authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds, conferring certain powers upon the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners, imposing certain conditions in connection with the expenditure of the proceeds derived from the sale of said certificates of indebtedness, conferring and imposing upon the Board of Finance of Baltimore City certain powers and duties. Authorizing the submission of this ordinance to the legal voters of the city of Baltimore for their approval or disapproval at the election to be held on Tuesday, the 6th day of November 2018, and providing for the expenditure of the proceeds of sale of said certificates of indebtedness in accordance with the provisions of the Charter of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore and by the municipal agency designated in the annual ordinance of estimates of the mayor and city council of Baltimore. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0213, Bond Issue Community and Economic Development Loan, $47 million for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore pursuant to General Assembly, House Resolution 3, Senate Resolution 1 of 2018 approved by the members of the Maryland General Assembly representing Baltimore City to create a debt and to issue and sell its certificates of indebtedness as evidence thereof and proceeds not exceeding $47 million from the sale of such certificates of indebtedness to be used for the cost of issuance, including the expense of engraving, printing, advertising, attorney's fees, and all other incidental expenses connected therewith, and the remainder of such proceeds to be used for or in connection with the planning, developing, executing, and making operative the community, commercial, and industrial economic development programs of the mayor and city council of Baltimore, including but not limited to the acquisition by purchase lease condemnation or any other legal means or land or property or any right, interest, franchise, easement, or privilege therein in the city of Baltimore. The payment of any and all costs and expenses incurred in connection with or incidental to the acquisition of and management of said land or property, including any and all rights or interest therein herein before mentioned. The payment of any and all costs and expenses incurred for or in connection with the relocating and moving persons and other legal or other legal entities displaced by the acquisition of said land or property or any of the rights or interests therein herein before mentioned. The development or redevelopment, including but not limited to the comprehensive renovation or rehabilitation of any land or property, any rights or any rights or interests therein herein before mentioned in the city of Baltimore, and the disposition of land and property for such purposes, the elimination of unhealthful, unsanitary, unsafe conditions, lessening density, eliminating obsolete or other uses detrimental to the public welfare or otherwise removing or preventing the spread of blight or deterioration in the city of Baltimore. The creation of healthy, sanitary, and safe, and green conditions in the city of Baltimore. The demolition, removal, relocation, renovation, or alteration of land, building, streets, highways, alleys, utilities, or services, or other structures or improvements, and for the construction, reconstruction, installation, relocation, or repair of buildings, streets, highways, alleys, utilities, and services, and other structures or improvements, making loans and grants to various projects and programs related to growing businesses in the city, attracting and retaining jobs, providing homeownership incentives and home repair assistance, making loans and grants to various projects and programs related to improving the cultural life and promotion of tourism in Baltimore City, and the lending or granting of funds to any person or legal entity to be used for or in connection with the rehabilitation, renovation, redevelopment, improvement, or construction of buildings, instructions, structures to be used or occupied for residential or commercial purposes, and for the payment of any and all costs and expenses incurred for or in connection with doing any and all of the things herein mentioned, including but not limited to the costs and expenses of securing administrative appraisal, economic analysis, engineering, planning, designing, architectural surveying, and other professional services, and for doing any and all things necessary proper or expedient in connection with or pertaining to any and all of the matters or things herein before mentioned. All such land or properties shall be acquired, developed, and redeveloped, renovated, rehabilitated, altered, improved, held, or disposed of as provided by law. Authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds, conferring and imposing upon the Board of Finance of Baltimore City certain powers and duties. Authorizing the submission of this ordinance to the legal voters of the city of Baltimore for their approval or disapproval at the general election to be held in Baltimore City on Tuesday, the 6th day of November 2018, and providing for the expenditure of the proceeds of sale of said certificates of indebtedness in accordance with the provisions of the Charter of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore and by the municipal agency designated in the annual ordinance of estimates of the mayor and city council of Baltimore. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0214, Bond Issue Recreation Parks and Public Facilities Loan, $65 million for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore pursuant to General Assembly, House Resolution 1 and Senate Resolution 3 of 2018 approved by the members of the Maryland General Assembly representing Baltimore City to create a debt and to issue and sell its certificates of indebtedness as evidence thereof and proceeds not exceeding $65 million from the sale of such certificates of indebtedness to be used for the cost of issuance, including the expense of engraving, printing, advertising, attorney's fees, and all other incidental expenses connected therewith, which may include their proportion of the compensation of employees and general administrative expenses of the Department of Finance reasonably allocated to the issuance of the bonds, for the development of the buildings and facilities owned or controlled by the mayor and city council of Baltimore, and the Enoch Pratt Free Library, and the development of public parks, park, and recreational land, property, building, structures, or facilities, including but not limited to the acquisition by purchase lease condemnation or any other legal means of land or property or any rights therein in the city of Baltimore, and constructing and erecting on said land or property or on any land or property, new buildings, structures, and auxiliary facilities. For the renovation, alteration, construction, reconstruction, installation, improvement, and repair of existing buildings, structures, or facilities to be or now being used for or in connection with the operations, functions, and activities of the mayor and city council of Baltimore, and the Enoch Pratt Free Library, public parks, and recreation, and related property, buildings, structures, or facilities. The demolition, removal, relocation, renovation, or alteration of land and building, streets, highways, alleys, utilities, or services, and other structures or improvements, and for the construction, reconstruction, installation, relocation, or repair of buildings, streets, highways, alleys, utilities, or services, including information, technology, infrastructure, and other structures or improvements. For the acquisition of trees and for the tree planting program, and for the acquisition and installation of equipment and fixtures for any and all facilities authorized to be constructed, erected, altered, reconstructed, renovated, installed, or improved by the provisions thereof. The payment of any and all costs and expenses incurred for or in connection with doing any and all of the things herein mentioned, including but not limited to the costs and expenses of securing administrative appraisal, economic analysis, engineering, planning, designing, architectural surveying, and other professional services, and for doing any and all things necessary proper or expedient in connection with or pertaining to any and all of the matters or things herein before mentioned. Authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds, conferring and imposing upon the Board of Finance of Baltimore City certain powers and duties. Authorizing the submission of this ordinance to the legal voters of the city of Baltimore for their approval or disapproval at the general election to be held in Baltimore City on Tuesday, the 6th day of November 2018, and providing for the expenditure of the proceeds of sale of said certificates of indebtedness in accordance with the provisions of the Charter of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore and by the municipal agency designated in the annual ordinance estimates of the mayor and city council of Baltimore. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.[1720.11][1720.11][applause] Resolutions introduced.
City Council Resolution 18-0074R, informational hearing, impact of net neutrality repeal on city operations, for the purpose of calling on representatives from the mayor's office of information technology, the Department of Finance, the Enoch Pratt Free Library, Baltimore City Public Schools, and the municipal telephone exchange to appear before the city council to address the potential impact of net neutrality repeal on their technology plans and the city's costs, as well as what steps can be taken to mitigate the risks posed by net neutrality repeal. Sponsored President Young, Henry, Scott, Costello, Burnett, Bullock, Pinkett, Dorsey, Cohen, Middleton, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Thank you. Please note that Councilman Reisinger is a co-sponsor. I mean, this is self-explanatory. As most of you know, President Obama issued net neutrality, and Mr. Trump and his administration is repealing that. So this is just to call on all of our city agencies to tell us how this is going to affect us as a city of Baltimore with our school system and all the other technology that we use to move city government along. So I want to thank everybody. So I want to thank everybody for their co-sponsorship, and this will be assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Resolution eighteen dash zero zero seven five R, informational hearing, municipal broadband feasibility study, for the purpose of requesting that the Department of Finance, the Department of Transportation, and the Mayor's Office of Information Technology appear before the City Council to discuss how they can collaborate to produce a formal feasibility study on developing a municipal-owned broadband network in Baltimore capable of ensuring that all Baltimore families have adequate internet access options. Sponsored by President Young, Henry, Scott, Costello, Burnett, Bullock, Pinkett, Dorsey, Cohen, Middleton, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Ross Singer, as a co-sponsor, and this is just, again, a feasibility study to see if it's feasible for us to create our own broadband network to offer low-cost internet, you know, internet network stuff to our citizens in Baltimore. As you know, with the net neutrality, with the cost, we did a, we looked at a Burger King commercial where it talked about Whopper neutrality, and it had one lane that was for people who wanted the super mac, or the big Whopper, then it had another one for anybody who wanted chicken and fries. And it was easy to explain because it's saying that in order for you to get the Whopper, you have to have so many megabytes in order to get the Whopper. And one guy said, "Well, can I get a Whopper?" And they said, "No, you can't have the Whopper. You only can get the chicken because your watts or your megabytes are not high enough to get the Whopper." I mean, it was, I sent it to all the council members, please look at it because it's really funny, but it just goes to show that if we don't do anything to try to keep the cost low for our citizens, it's going to be out of reach for some of our citizens to have internet and also cable. So I want to thank my co-sponsors. This will be assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Resolution eighteen dash zero zero seven six R, investigative hearing, physical status of the municipal conduit system, for the purpose of calling on representatives from the Department of Transportation and its Conduit Section Engineering Group to appear before the City Council to discuss the physical condition of the municipal conduit system, its current reach, maintenance plans, and any plans to expand the system. Sponsored by President Young, Henry, Scott, Costello, Burnett, Bullock, Pinkett, Dorsey, Cohen, Middleton, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Schleifer, Councilman Ross Singer, as co-sponsors. And most of you know that our conduit is leased by various entities throughout the city, and the money for the conduits from BGE standpoint can only be used for upgrade of our conduit system. So this will be just a, okay, this will be just so that we can make sure that our system can handle what we want to do with broadband internet access. So we're just going to have them to come in and tell us how our system is doing, what upgrades we need for our system in order to move forward if we decide to do municipal broadband for our citizens in Baltimore. This has been assigned to Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Council President recognize Councilman Scott.
I'll make a motion to move for.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of short titles for the remainder of the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and we will have short titles for the remainder of the hearing. You can find the consent counter in Section Eight. At the back of the agenda is their motion to approve the consent counter. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Cohen. All those in favor of approving the consent counter, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and this counter is approved. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero one eighty-five, non-ordered occupied dwelling units, rooming houses, and vacant structures, rental dwellings, registration, and licensing.
Chair recognize, who am I recognizing? Costello, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a.
I was looking for him to continue to read, forgot that we already did short titles.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this bill. We also held a work session on it. There are amendments on my colleague's desk. At this time, I'd like to move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approved, this bill is amended. Please note that Councilman Schleifer has a nay. You want to speak to the amendments or the bill? Wait. Okay, all right. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Please note that Councilman Schleifer is a no, and Chair recognize Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I believe this bill does address some important things, and so I was encouraged to see the bill. However, as we work through the bill, there's, I still have some challenges with the bill. Most importantly, amongst many others, is that HABC and public housing is excluded, and I believe that the intentions of the bill here is to improve the quality of the housing for everybody in the city, and I don't think that people in public housing should have any different housing than anybody else. And so after reviewing all that, I can't, I can't vote in support of this bill.
Thank you. This bill moves to third reader. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero one ninety-five, PACE loan program corrective.
The Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this bill. At this time, I'd like to move the amendments.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of approving the floor amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the bill is amended. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two zero five, Baltimore City Commission for Women, non-voting members.
Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to defer to my colleague, Council Vice President Middleton.
Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have a floor amendment, and it's on all council members' desks, and just to review again, it's striking members of the Baltimore City Council and adding certain elected officials from Baltimore City as ex officios.
Chair recognize Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to defer to my colleague, Council Vice President Middleton.
Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
Say it again. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a floor amendment, and it is on council members' desks.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving the floor amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill is amended. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approved, this bill moves to third reader. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke Council Rule twelve dash one to move City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two zero five to third reader at the same meeting.
Second by Council Vice President Middleton. There's a roll call.
President Young, Cohen.
Yeah, go ahead.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
The motion carries, Council Bill eighteen dash oh two oh five is on third reader. Land use and transportation, land use and transportation.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero seven nine, rezoning twenty-three hundred Ebson Avenue for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as twenty-three hundred Ebson Avenue as outlined and read on the accompanying plaid from the R seven zoning district to the C one zoning district.
Chair recognize Chairman Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Chairman Bullock. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognize Chairman Ross Singer.
Mr. President, no amendments, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Chairman Bullock. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approved, this bill moves to third reader. Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero five two R, informational hearing, Baltimore's disaster preparedness.
Chair recognize Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, the Public Safety Committee recently had a hearing on this bill, the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management, members of the Police Department, and other agencies were present to tell us their disaster preparedness, but before I go any further, Mr. President, I'd like to defer to the lead sponsor, Councilman Robert Stokes, to see if he has any comment.
All right, Chair recognize Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held the hearing, and we were being, found out are we prepared for disaster preparedness, especially in Baltimore City because of what happened in Houston and Texas. It was a good meeting, and Mr. McMillan, Mr. McMillan is supposed to be sending us some updated reports that we need to get from Coop and Coop. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chair recognize Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as the colleague said, Director McMillan said they will have a new disaster preparedness report from the agency at the end of the year, which we've already said we will bring them back in to go over that once we receive it. With that, Mr. President, I would like to move the resolution favorable.
Second by Chairman Stokes. All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion approved, this resolution is adopted. Third reader, requiring invocation of Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two zero five, Baltimore City Commission for Women, non-voting members, President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Madam Vice President, you want to say anything about it? Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
I'd just like to thank everyone for following through with this long process that has been going on since September, October, and now we're at the point where tomorrow there's going to be a wonderful meeting with all of the hundred-plus women to kind of really take this commission to another level. It just shows that, again, that this is the year of the woman, for many wonderful years ahead, and I'd like to thank all of the male council members that agree with that statement.
Thank you. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one four two, city property grant of easements, President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one four three, repeal of ordinance fourteen dash three one four, Remington Row planned unit development, President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Oh, please note that Councilwoman Clark abstains on Council Bill seventeen dash oh one four three.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one four, City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one five one, rezoning thirty-three ten Ridgewood Avenue, President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one five eight, rezoning seventeen seventy and seventeen eighty Union Avenue, President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognize Vice President Ross Singer. Any committee announcements over here? Did I say Vice President again? Well, he was Vice President for so long. Chair recognize Chairman Ross Singer. Planning Commission.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing of Bill eighteen dash zero one nine four on April twenty-fifth at one PM in the council chambers. I also move for suspension of rules, ten dash two.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of announcing the hearing, suspending the rules, the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognize Chairman Ross Singer.
Yes, this is zoning conditional-use parking lot at three forty-seven through three fifty-seven North Calvert Street, and three fifty-two and three sixty Davis Street. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero one zero two, April twenty-fifth at five PM. This is televised hearing. This is on regards to complete streets. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine one on May the second at one PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning conditional-use parking lot at nineteen oh four Wilmington Avenue. Committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine three, May the second at one oh five PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning appeals to zoning board corrective. Also, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill eighteen dash zero one eight one on May ninth at one PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning conditional-use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-dwelling unit in the R eight zoning district located at eight twenty-four North Carlton Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, April fifth at one PM on City Council Bill seventeen dash zero 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 three R, quarterly budget briefings, this will be for second quarter of fiscal eighteen, and that will be on, I'm sorry, Thursday, April fifth at one PM, and then on that same day at two thirty PM, Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 four R, which is the sister resolution for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, quarter two, for Baltimore City Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognize Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing Wednesday, April eleventh at ten o'clock for the view of following nomination, to be a member of the Commission on Age and Retirement Education would be James L. Carter. For that same commission at ten thirty would be Lee Michaels. For that same commission at eleven AM, same day, would be Philari Gibson. Thank you.
Chair recognize Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, April tenth, the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be hearing Bill eighteen dash zero one eight three, introduced by Councilmember Clark, which is the ordinance urban renewal Coldstream Homestead Montebello Amendment. On Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee at two PM will be hearing Bill eighteen zero